Welcome to this meeting of the Tongonoxi City Council. We will go ahead and begin. Could you please call the roll, Mrs. Huntington?
Yes. Mr. Partridge?
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon's absent. The mayor's absent. Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Donnelly?
Here.
Mr. Dale?
Here.
All right, let's all join in speaking the Pledge of Allegiance. You pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now, we will move on to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on October 6th. Any discussion of the minutes from the previous meeting?
I will move that we approve.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That is approved. Now, we move on to the consent agenda so the city can conduct a paying of the bills and other regular daily business transactions. Is there any comment or discussion of that on the consent agenda tonight?
I'd make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That also passes. Old business. Mr. Porter indicated no one signed up to speak.
No signups, Mayor.
All right. Under new business, before we start with the special use permit, Mr. Porter would like to introduce a new member of our city staff.
They'll make you stand up. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. I'm excited to introduce you all tonight to Debbie Smith. She's our newest employee at City Hall and a small but mighty team. Debbie's joined us as an administrative assistant. She's been with us for the past month and a half on a part-time basis while she wrapped up obligations with a previous employer. Debbie brings a wealth of experience and a great skill set and a great attitude towards the job and towards the public. So, we're really thrilled to have her on board. She started today in a full-time capacity and resides in Tongonoxi with her family and is very involved with the community. So, we're more than thrilled to have her on board and wanted to let you all have a chance to say hello to her and for her to observe a city council meeting. Thank you for the opportunity.
Wonderful. Well, welcome to the team.
Welcome.
This may not be as thrilling, and after a long first day, we put you first intentionally. So, if you have other obligations with your family, don't feel like you need to stay for the entirety of this riveting business we have before us tonight. But, yeah, we're happy that you're here. Okay. Under new business, item A is to consider a special use permit. Dan, would you break down some of the basics of this? This has already gone through the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Protem. So, this item is a special use permit for an existing business, an existing facility. As you'll see in the included staff report, this item was prepared for and considered by the Planning Commission who recommended unanimous approval of a recommendation to the city council to approve it. We did also need to wait 14 days for a protest petition period. No such petition was filed, so there's no supermajority voting requirement of the city council. A simple motion to approve with a majority vote would pass it. You'll also see items A through, I believe, K in the staff report, which are staff conditions of the approval. Those are included in detail also in the staff report, and we could answer any questions you may have on that. The applicant is here, Desiree Kenny. I'd like to acknowledge that she's here, and she indicated she'd be welcome to take any questions you had, if you have any. But again, this is for a daycare facility in the historic business district at property located at 628 East Fourth Street. Staff don't have any additional comments, but we're happy to help with any questions.
Counsel, any questions or comments? All right, then, I look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve draft ordinance 1535 approving a special use permit for Adventure Awakes LLC daycare at 628 East Fourth Street.
All right. Thank you. We've had a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Let's vote all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That has passed. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Moving on to the resolution to consider approval of the front street improvement contract. All right. I know we have some good news from this bidding process.
That's right.
Mr. Porter, could you break that down for us a little bit?
Certainly. We're happy to report the outcome of our recent bid letting and bid collections for the Front Street Improvements project. As a reminder, this is a complete reconstruction of the curb, street surface, and addition of a sidewalk and missing stormwater infrastructure needed along Front Street between Ridge Street and Tongonoxi Drive near the new dog park facility. This project was with an engineer's estimate of about $815,000 for the construction cost at the bid opening. We had a tremendous bid interest with seven bidders completing full bids, and the low bid was from Kansas Heavy Construction for $556,738. This is obviously a tremendous advantage compared to our estimates, and if we have anything to attribute it to, staff have some inclination that the level of work and investment going on south of us in the De Soto region has brought more attention from more contractors capable of doing projects of this nature. But you will notice that the low bid, by quite a significant margin, was the most local of the bidding companies. Their subs include vendors in Udora, the Bonner Springs area, and then obviously they're located between Basar and Tongonoxi. So, all in all, we're very pleased with the bid outcome. BG's consultant staff are in communication with the company. As a reminder, we'll approve a contract tonight. Work probably won't begin onsite until February or March of next year, weather permitting, but we will be ordering stormwater improvement, concrete, and some other commodities as soon as possible this year, which have a long lead time. Staff are happy to take any questions. One thing I would like to add as a note, though, is because of the bid outcome and because of the margin between our budget and funds available, the city council may have an opportunity to consider an addendum to the contract at a later date to add scope of work. What that looks like now, if anything, as an option, is uncertain, but we're working with BG consultant staff to identify. You'll probably remember initially this project was forecast in our CMIP as a full construction of Ridge and Front Street. So, there may be some stormwater improvements or pedestrian improvements possible along Ridge Street that could be added to this project with a contractor onsite and doing work as early as next year. We don't have those answers today. We couldn't incorporate them anyway today because this is a bid outcome for the scope of work that was bid. But staff will have a more detailed presentation hopefully in the next meeting or two before it would be too late to consider such a concept. But wanted to make you alert to that effort with BG consultants to look at other options for our contemplation for this project. Happy to take any questions on that or the bid outcome.
Are there comments from counsel? It's always nice to get good news on a bid, and the idea of giving us some flexibility for Ridge Street further down the road is definitely good news and a good option.
Yeah, it's a good contractor. They've been around a long time.
Yeah, that's reassuring. All right. If not, I will look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
You're right.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 10-25-01 awarding the Front Street Improvements construction contract to Kansas Heavy Construction LLC in the amount of $556,738 and authorizing construction to begin.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That has also passed unanimously.
That's going to be a good project.
Yeah.
It really is needed.
I agree completely. All right. Now, we are going to discuss the approval of the draft interlocal agreement with the Tongonoxi Rec Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We're pulling up a brief presentation just to help outline the points here of this item. Since it's not new to you, we won't take too much time. I'd like to recognize Brad Echols, who's here tonight, the director of the Tongonoxi Recreation Commission. Brad's the real lead of this project, so if you have any real questions, kick them over to him, and we'll stand his back up. So, you could advance this slide. Thanks, Lindsay. So, this item before you tonight is consideration of approval of a draft interlocal agreement, which was one step of a multi-layered project with multi-concurrent initiatives as well. So, this is just one of those pieces. This slide has a lot of information, so I won't read every word, but I will try to outline. You'll all recall back in June of this year, Mr. Echols came to the city council during a budget work session, garnered support from a majority of the council for advancing a proposal to work jointly between the city and the Recreation Commission for a playground replacement, expansion, and other park improvements on the Chieftain Park property, the local community's destination playground currently. We've completed a lot of additional staff research. We've looked at the history of the working relationship between the Rec Commission and the city to advance park development capital projects, and we exchanged a term sheet. You'll also remember that term sheet came back before the city council earlier this fall. Based on that outcome, the city attorney has drafted the interlocal agreement in the form currently in the agenda packet tonight. Our timeline is upon approval by the city, the Rec Commission, and the school district, based on their relationship with the Rec Commission. That agreement would then be forwarded to the Kansas Attorney General's Office, who has a 90-day window to deny it with comments, approve it, or ignore it, at which time in 90 days, it's considered approved. We don't know yet which of those three avenues will come to fruition, but we can hope that it's the approval in a quick fashion. Some of the other big decisions, though, that need to be made in the intervening months between now and the end of the year, most likely, are procurement and finalization of lease purchase financing for the improvements. That has to be in place before a contract with a playground equipment provider could ever be put in place. We do have to have that buttoned up, so we're working on some of those preparations. We're also looking at the development of an operating lease that would be similar to the city's arrangement with the public library for the operation of that facility. So, the city owns that public asset, the library operates it, and the operating lease gives roles and responsibilities for each party, helps avoid issues when things break or things come up down the road of finger pointing or concerns about who can address issues. And we're happy to model that based off the current arrangement, because the current arrangement with the Rec Commission owning Chieftain Park, maintaining it, and operating it as a park, is working very well. We're just needing to assume some new clarifications if the city is, in fact, the holder of that property title. So, like I said, a lot of balls in the air, but really, one general goal is to help facilitate the Rec Commission advancing a major renovation of that playground equipment. The other piece that will be coming up, oh, sorry, one last point. Thank you. The last piece on this slide is the project's procurement. And so, Brad and I are currently underway in developing a draft, either RFP or RFQ, because the city's the property owner in this project scenario. We have to follow our procurement policies in advancing this project, and we're not 100% certain yet, but we're making some considerations about whether it should be a design-build project where we go into contract with a firm to design and install and procure the equipment, or if it's going to be multiple contracts handled by the city, including a separate design and then a separate equipment purchase and installation cost. There's a few in-kind services that have been also discussed, like removal of the existing equipment by city staff with city equipment, and we're confident we can get to a resolution on those topics. What's before you tonight, though, again, and highlighted on this slide, is the terms of the interlocal agreement. I'll boil it down way too simplistic to say that the Rec Commission will repay the city for debt service on that lease purchase agreement. That's been the arrangement in previous agreements to develop the Tongonoxi Ballfields and other structures in the past history of the city and working with the Rec Commission. I don't have any other comments, unless Brad, do you have any that you'd like to add?
We're going to.
All right. Good. The next slide, Lindsay. The next slide just has some other information. Another key point, and it's come up in the term sheet in the past, the term of financing and repayment schedule is five years, which the city is very glad that the Rec Commission was able to be that aggressive with its forecast. Maximum budget amount of $1 million. You'll be shocked if you look at a catalog of playground equipment, how far you think a million dollars goes, and then how far it really goes are two widely different things, at least the catalogs we're looking at. And we also have agreement defined with the Rec Commission for reimbursing the city for legal services, engineering services, surveying, you know, future work that'll be potentially in-depth or potentially pretty simple for this project. Overall, I would say we're very excited about seeing what the future of the Chieftain Park facilities will look like. It also puts us on pace to sort of realign the city's overall relationship with the Rec Commission and our community, and to try to leverage our respective resources and skill sets and levels of expertise to better the community in the long run. So, we think this is a good step in that regard, and that the interlocal agreement as drafted is very, more than sufficient to meet those ends. Happy to take any questions anyone has.
I got one for you and then one for Mr. Echols. What is our mechanism going to be for, are we going to borrow the million dollars, or are we going to take that out of general funds?
It'll be a lease purchase agreement. So, under that scenario, the bank with the winning bid will provide us those funds in a sense of a construction loan, but except the money will be fronted, and then we'll commence repayment according to that schedule. So, there will be a push to move the project along fairly quickly and not be in a negative arbitrage situation, something like that.
Gotcha. And then, I was just curious, what's your finances situation look like on the dog park? How much of that is, are still outstanding, if any, to pay out?
That's paid for.
Okay. Great. That's all I got.
Got a couple of questions. Brad, when we built the original one, I was one of the installers a thousand years ago. And I was on the rec board at the time, and I remember that the company that provided it also, they would provide turnkey services. So, have you looked into multiple suppliers that would do a design build already?
Yeah. We've already spoke with a couple of different, couple of our companies. We've got a pretty good relationship with them, bought different things in the past. So, yeah, I mean, I think.
Any of the ones that we've worked with so far would be great options. They're reputable companies. They do a lot of, we've been, we've visited a couple parks that they've done here in the area. Nice, big parks. Some of the things they're doing nowadays are pretty incredible. So, it's exciting to see what we can do at Chieftain Park.
And do you feel like we can get that design-build deal versus engineered, let-for-bid type? Surely, we can get there with that, I would think.
I would, I think it's pretty much our preference of what we, how we want to go, what we want to do.
And the other question would be, once you start, do you have a timeframe? That's a very popular asset that is here that you share and we share, and we all, the community shares. How long is that going to be offline? We get an idea, just a rough idea.
We were hoping to shoot for an install, like, next winter, when the park's not in as much demand. The downside there is you're dealing with winter weather, and you could be snowing, and no work could be done for a couple weeks or something like that. So, it might take a little bit longer, but, you know, that's such a popular park, and then we're talking about, you know, the type of work we're typing to do, half the park could be off limits for, you know, you don't want to do that in May, June, July, you know? We want to keep that park open, the trails. You know, I envision the trails, a portion of the trails being closed down for a period of time during construction. So, we want to do that when it's not as busy. So, winter time's kind of what we're shooting for.
Less than six months?
For a total install?
Yeah.
I mean, the companies we've talked to have talked about, you know, a couple months, depending on weather. So, depending on weather and depending on what we do as well, so.
Sure. And I understand.
And the options are, the options are endless. The catalogs Dan's talking about. So, I think that's why having a designer and someone, because you can sit down, and the options are unlimited. So, having somebody that's, can kind of talk you through the process will be very helpful.
And then, on the lease purchase, we're just going to float it to the local banks?
That was our intent, was to do a regional offering. Normally, there's three to four options that could bid, and the council would then have those opportunities to look through. That would be primarily for the construct, well, we call it construction, but it's purchase of equipment and installation services. We need to keep design costs relatively low to qualify for that lease purchase, because you have to have a piece of property to do a lease purchase financing. It can't be an all-design project.
Brad, I would ask that you make sure to consider, and I'm sure you're going to do this, having equipment that would be usable by children with all different abilities, people who may be using a wheelchair or a walker, those types of factors would be taken into consideration when you're selecting the equipment.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else on counsel have any questions? Okay. If not, I would look for a motion.
I would make a motion we adopt Resolution, I hope I'm on the right one, 102502, and authorize the approval of a draft interlocal agreement with the Tongonoxi Rec Commission for 2025 Chieftain Park Improvement Project.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. That has passed unanimously. Congratulations. It took a long time to get to this today, and thank you, Anna, for all your legal expertise. All right. Up next is considering the approval of right-of-way use for 223 South Delaware Street.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll do a brief introduction and then also ask Ms. Kirstelich, the city attorney, to have a bit of input as well. So, this item before you tonight includes an agenda statement with a lot more detail, but I'll sum it up as saying, the draft right-of-way use agreement is intended to be a mechanism in which the property owner, in this case, who I'd like to recognize is here tonight, Lisa Patterson, with the house just around the corner on Delaware Street, has currently in her front yard space, a existing sidewalk that's a non-connected segment. So, it doesn't extend on the block to the north. It does not really provide pedestrian connectivity. Within her neighborhood, there's also a sidewalk on the other side of Delaware Street, be the west side, that does fully traverse the block and provide connectivity. Ms. Patterson approached the city staff recently with discussions about how to affect the removal of that sidewalk without violating city ordinances, which generally require that a sidewalk be maintained by a property owner and replaced at the property owner's expense in the event that it fails or has issues. City staff did research a couple different avenues to make this possible. One would be vacation of the right-of-way, which would include consideration by the Planning Commission, survey of utilities, a survey of the right-of-way to be contemplated for vacation. That is probably of the two potential alternatives, very clearly the inferior path for the city staff perspective, at least. The other is the agreement before you tonight, a right-of-way use agreement that was developed by the city attorney, reviewed with city staff and with the property owner, and we'll have just a little bit more comment on a couple provisions on that front. City staff have reviewed the draft agreement prepared by the city attorney and have no concerns with the language included in it. As you'll see in the draft agreement, it does also outline that the use of this right-of-way by the property owner is intended to be lawn or landscaping, which is in conformance with the neighborhood and doesn't present any outstanding concerns from the perspective of city staff versus the surrounding properties and that area of the city. And Anna, I don't know if you want to address the insurance question?
There were some insurance questions raised by the property owner. The preference was not to include a requirement to carry insurance. You'll see that it starts at the bottom of page three, continues on to page four. We consulted with, I've got a partner that specializes in insurance matters, and the change, so we did make some additional changes before tonight's meeting. The agreement does still require the property owner to carry the insurance, but we don't require the additional insured coverage to the city. And so, we took out a lot of the requirements about, you know, the additional insured coverage, the primary non-contributory basis, severability of interest, all of those provisions. I mean, basically, we're just requiring that they maintain the property insurance. I understand that the property owner does want to address the council about that requirement. But is that sufficient for? Yeah. And then, we can, I can be happy to address any questions after that.
First, I should say thank you to Dan, Anna, and George. They were great when I came to them in July. We have this thing that just sits in the yard, and people have been driving up to it for at least 20 years. How can we get this worked out? So, they've been great to work with. As Anna called out, there is a requirement for insurance if we lift that sidewalk out. And I'm just flagging that I am not required to have insurance on property now. Oftentimes, you have a mortgage, which will require you to have insurance, but I don't own property without having insurance on it. So, it's an added level. If I pass this property on to a new owner, they now have a requirement that they wouldn't have to a competing property. So, my request is for the council to not require insurance to be carried on that right-of-way. I currently have to carry insurance on the right-of-way, so I just want to make a request.
Okay. Thank you. Your comments?
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay. Given this information, for counsel?
Is there actually a right-of-way on it filed of record?
This is part of the original plat of Tongonoxi, and so.
The house needs to go flat, not anything recent.
No.
So, more than likely, all the houses down the street have the exact same with no sidewalk. So, would we be treating Lisa the same way we're treating all those other people?
We are, by this agreement, we are specifically authorizing her to use the property in a certain way. It's, you know, a portion of city property, essentially, of city right-of-way. So, the adjoining neighbors know down the street they're not, but they're also not authorized to use that portion of the right-of-way.
But they are. Because, I'm not trying to open.
Because the sidewalk doesn't exist.
Correctly. And make sure, if everybody else is getting away with it, why don't we get away with it, too? It only makes sense.
What's the, what's the reason why you guys want that, or why, where the city is recommending having the insurance in place?
We typically require insurance in agreements generally, and in an agreement of this type, there is an indemnification obligation in case something were to happen. So, the insurance would be, you know, to back that up. But, again, that is something that, you know, the council could choose to waive.
And I think I would add, too, we have other circumstances in the community where we have right-of-way impediments. Some are longstanding and grandfathered in, in a sense, without an agreement. In any such agreement where someone would propose to build something of private ownership in the city's right-of-way and require a right-of-way use agreement, we would strongly recommend the insurance requirement be added. In this case, you'll see that the proposed use is landscaping or a yard environment, which is obviously much lower risk and more standard than in those other circumstances. So, I just wanted to point that out as well for your contemplation.
And I have it. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You're not adjusting, I mean, we're not adjusting the street. The curb is all there still. Everything is staying the same. It just, yeah.
And it is clear, the sidewalk not only doesn't connect, but it doesn't connect to my right-of-way. So, the sidewalk goes into my yard, terminates, there's open grass, there's a water meter, and then you have to walk down to a driveway. So, it's not like people would just be walking through.
I didn't, forgive me, I haven't read every word of the agreement, but it doesn't allow her to do anything except lawn slash landscape, correct? My two cents are, I don't think that we should make her have it, because I think it'd be a pain in the ass to sell it later. That's just my opinion.
Well, we haven't addressed it on the rest of the houses that have probably.
Exactly.
They've probably been sold 50 times, maybe 100 times over as old as that is.
Lisa, have you looked into what that cost would even be to ensure a strip of your house that would now be in this, that would be in the city, but it would have been altered in some way?
Yeah. I haven't examined that cost.
I just wondered.
The bigger cost comes that you can't pass that property on as a competing property. The bigger cost comes that you can't pass that property on as a competing property, because it has a requirement to have insurance on it.
Right. I mean, if it was $4 a year versus $1,600 a year, I guess that that would be the difference? I didn't know if you had looked into that at all.
I don't know. I think the bigger issue is I haven't seen insurance for $4 a year on a penny.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
You know, I don't have the number, but the issue is the added requirement that it takes for me to try to sell a property.
And under the circumstances, this is ultimately a risk analysis. And it, considering that the type of use, again, I would defer to your judgment on this, we would routinely include an insurance provision, but I do, you know, I do think the risk is pretty low.
So Anna, at this point, you've put time into developing this right-of-way use agreement, the official term. And if council has a disagreement with that portion of it, which is what I'm sensing from at least two members of council right now, what would that take for, in terms of your legal time, to redo that agreement and then re-present it at a later time?
It wouldn't be necessary to re-present it. If you want to forego the insurance requirement, I would just ask for the motion approving the agreement to be, to include, well, to address exclusion of that insurance requirement. And that would just be subsection, it'd be section 2I, so it'd just omit 2I. And then you could approve that tonight and wouldn't have to come back.
Well, does anybody, you got anything to say, Jake? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but if you don't, I will make a motion to adopt resolution 1025-03, approving the right-of-way use agreement for 223 South Delaware Street, omitting agreement section 2I.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Dale?
I have nothing to add.
All right. All those in favor approving this motion with the omission of the risk management input by our legal counsel? Please say aye.
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 All right. This motion has passed.
We probably have this all over, over part of the city anyways. Is there something over long-term we should do, Anna, to fix some of that or not fix it? Because there's places all over that are just like this, that some have some sidewalks that doesn't have some sidewalks. Or is that something we just deal with one by one over time?
It's a good question, Mr. Donnelly. The, there are always contextual circumstances too, like the presence of a sidewalk across the street. So you know that our current city code only requires installation on one side of the street, but we do have older parts of town primarily that have a scattering of gaps or up half one block and across and ADA crossings. One thing the city can do is look at grant programs for ADA accessibility that help us bridge those gaps in the most difficult areas, I would say, of the oldest parts of the city. But another initiative we've looked at is in our CMIP, we've got addressing other connectivity problems, such as west of the middle school and elementary school campus, there's a region of several blocks that totally has no sidewalks on either side. And I think when we look at priorities and hear from citizens, we hear more about those gaps of a larger nature and less about a dead-end sidewalk or a segment in a homeowner's yard. But I guess I would say we don't want to encourage right-of-way use agreements all over the city as a solution. And I think in most cases, the contextual evidence won't support staff supporting that you look at approving. So it's a little bit of a unique case here, I think.
Well, it reminds me of the alleyways that we run into.
Yeah.
You all have probably sat in an alleyway discussion. I've probably been at 50, so it seems like the same type of thing.
Yeah.
But we have it, we just kind of kick it every time it comes up. We just kind of boot it, and maybe it'll go away and won't be back for, till the next council gets on, so.
And it's true, thinking about our, our A-plus road construction for new roads, we do have curbs and gutters and sidewalks, and we think about grandfathering in older parts of the city versus, another way to look at the streets is where our high-traffic areas, like our elementary school and middle school, also near our downtown, where our libraries are and the busy event venues. The person who lives, the situation next door to me, they ripped up an old sidewalk that would be highly used, being near to the library, the farmer's market, et cetera. It has not been replaced, even though it is in an older part of the neighborhood. So there are a lot of issues, I think, to delve into and look at when we're thinking about this issue. So it goes beyond one or the other. Anyway, good discussion, everybody. Let's move on. All right, let's talk about this wonderful air packs purchased equipment for the fire department.
Thank you. This item never seems to die. This is, I promise, the last action we'll request of you all. So this item, again, as a reminder, is a very exciting grant award the city fire department submitted for through FEMA, federal agency. I'll bring that point back in a moment. The FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, which provided a little over $200,000 in aid for air pack equipment, which is vital, expensive, and our current equipment is aging and nearing the need to replace. If we don't get a grant like this, we're looking at debt financing, potentially a purchase like this. In looking at the grant, city council previously authorized acceptance of the grant award and a budget amendment to authorize expense and revenue changes to our assumptions. Unfortunately, since that time, and actually before that action, there was a federal government shutdown that continues to be in place. So if you go to FEMA's grant portal to accept a grant, like we're trying to, you get told, we'll be back, question mark. So until that happens, we want to make sure that we are clear to this vendor, who we're asking you to, tonight, authorize procurement approval to accept a bid and place an order, that our order is not to be placed until we've formally accepted that grant upon the government restart of the FEMA agency. So we've made that clear to the vendor, that they've provided us this quote, which was again, procured cooperatively through the HGAC contract. That stands for Houston Galveston Area Council. It's a nice cooperative source procurement that meets our procurement policy. It's also been approved by the grant funding agency as part of our submittals. So staff don't have any concerns to present, this is already a pre-bid contract cost, and we're glad to support this recommendation for approval. But we did want to highlight in the motion, whoever does choose to make the motion tonight, that we are conditioning this approval on finalizing the acceptance of the grant from the federal government. Happy to take any questions you might have on this.
Any questions? Counsel? All right, then I'll look for a motion.
I'd make a motion, we authorize staff upon confirmation of the completion of the grant award acceptance for the fiscal year 2024 FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant AFG Program to accept a quote from Ed M. Feld Equipment Company, Inc., for a quote dated October 13, 2025, at the amount not to exceed $209,920.55.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no more discussion, then all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, let's talk about some winter weather and the salt we'll need for that. Dan?
Kent's not even here, so I'm gonna have to cover us on this one.
How empty he is.
Yeah, so that, I promise we're not out. That is the result of our in-house paving crew, who did a great job on the asphalt base. Apparently, when you scoop up the last scoop of salt and you get dirt and gravel and debris, it really messes with the spreaders that only spread salt. So after digging out and dumping out a few trucks, Kent made the executive decision to repave the salt barn that you see pictured in the agenda statement. So I thought that was pretty good. You can see the bid results. This is an item that the city has traditionally cooperated with Leavenworth County's collective bidding. We always get a bunch of Hutchinson, Kansas, area vendors who look at this. I'm not sure if Mr. Partridge could explain geology.
I know, this lion's can is 20 miles away. It's not even right.
Yep, it's, it's crazy. We order this in the tons, we order it and they bring us what they choose to load and bring us. So traditionally, at least since I've, I've worked here, we've always asked for authorization for five to 10 tons more than what we approve in the, what we intend to order, and the intent being that we don't then get invoiced for more than was approved for the purchase. So what's presented tonight is $12,320.70 of expenditure authority. Kent feels that ordering 200 tons this year will be sufficient for our needs. As you'll all remember, we had a very difficult winter, and I was a little surprised he didn't request more, but I think with his existing stockpile, he feels pretty confident that this will be sufficient. And in a pinch, we do have other last-minute costly options, but Mr. Haskett has a lot of good judgment in these areas, and we believe he's got a good tab on it. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Are we with the county now? This is not independent of the county bidding process.
This is using their procurement of quotes, and cities across the county have, have all taken this tack too. So we order under their bid price, that they'll invoice us and work with us directly.
All right. Looks like there's no discussion about this matter. Winter is coming. When I take, I would look for a motion to...
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of salt supplies in 2025 from Central Salt LLC for a total maximum cost of $12,320.70.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that has also passed.
Kent's picture showing our cupboard's bare.
Yeah. Good job, man.
He gave the tour.
Okay, city manager agenda, he is absent tonight.
Mayor Protem, I do have one item to add, if that's all right. Under that, just a quick update. Tomorrow is the KDOT local consult meeting, which you may have heard of through the LCDC and Port Authority agendas and discussions recently. I have a quick handout that I will have available for anyone on the city council who might choose to attend. This is an in-person meeting at the Great Wolf Lodge tomorrow at 1:00 PM. Regional collective effort to support local projects is the, the word of the day, and the county and LCDC and the Port Authority are all under discussions to help ensure that members do that to the extent they can. We're not entirely certain of, of what the output of this meeting will be, but there are other opportunities later in the year for virtual meetings in which people can show support for projects as well. So I don't have anything else to share on that, but I just wanted to offer a packet if anyone was interested in going and representing the city. Mr. Donnelly, yep, we'll get you one. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. That's good information. City attorney agenda?
No items.
All right. Mayor Protem agenda, I have no agenda items tonight, but I'm, thank you all for helping move this meeting forward. City council agenda?
I would like to, I believe, on behalf of everyone at staff and everyone on council, to continue our thoughts with George Brekovic and his family during this painful loss.
I agree. Thank you.
One comment, I want to thank the staff for putting the turn lanes in the paint, getting that done up at Stone Creek and Woodfield. That helps a lot. There's a lot of people that use that, and it's getting busier, obviously. I don't know that we addressed that a sidewalk crossing, you know, I'm gonna stay on as long as I can to stay on Rocky's point of getting, make sure we have our crossings and all. Kent has any extra stuff. That's, that's a busy, lots of young people on electric vehicles going 300 miles an hour. But they do use that crossing as a significant trail from deep in the subdivision out to the convenience store or to the grocery store or some of those things. So if we could probably take a peek at that one, add that on the list of crossings for markings, that would be, I would appreciate it. But that, that turn lane, that stuff has helped tremendously.
All right, Mr. Partridge?
All right, I will move that the city council recess into executive session for preliminary discussion of a potential acquisition of real property for public use pursuant to KSA 75-4319 subsection B6. The open meeting will resume in the city council chamber at 7:57 PM. The executive session will include the assistant city manager, city clerk, and city attorney. Do we need a second?
Second?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.